Ms. Mollinax, thank you for the shirts. What do I owe you? I told you I'm fine. Fifty bucks. Never mind.
We've got the honorable Mr. Ron Jordan here from the committee of one hundred for our report today.
Well, we've been social distancing like you guys. We haven't had a meeting since mid-March, about the time COVID-19 kind of took over our lives. And our next meeting will be in July and we're going to combine a meeting with the city in celebrating the ribbon cutting for the new fire hall. So a regular meeting will be in August. But we're like you, we've been concerned about the community and our people in the community. And I'm kind of glad things are opening up. If we can just open them up without incident, we would all be really grateful. I trust that you guys have been well. And since I saw you, I was telling the doctor, I've had a birthday and I've just finally reached middle eight. I just can't find anybody 156. So anyway, it is good to be with you today again and I'd like, before you officially start your meeting, if you'll allow me to have a word prayer, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Our Heavenly Father, as we start this school board meeting here in a moment, it is my privilege to not only pray for these men and women who lead our school system and care for our kids and teach our kids and make sure that the process goes well, but I also pray for our community. And these have been very interesting times, Lord, and in many cases, difficult times. But I pray that you would keep our people safe and healthy and may we be able to return to some semblance of normalcy soon. We thank you for these men and women and for their lives and for their work and in a sense, their ministry to our children. And so today, we place this meeting and these folks into your hand and ask that you would help, that they would make good decisions that would be for the betterment of our children and for the betterment of our community. We love you today and we give you thanks. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Take the run. Before we get started, if anybody wants to take their mask off, we're six feet apart, so I'll leave it up to you.
I thought.
I'd welcome everyone to June 11th, 2020 Lenore City Board of Education Meeting. Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Here.
Matthew Coleman.
Here.
Glenn McNish.
Here.
Mitch Ledbetter. Bobby Johnson is absent.
Everyone please stand for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Thank very much.
Oy, lo leigens, et du flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number six, approval of agenda. And we do have an addendum. And the addendum is the approval of 2020-21 Budget General Purpose Fund Revision.
I salute.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Okay, item number seven, retirement recognition of the following employees. Doctor Mark.
Yes, Board, I would like for us to take a moment and thank those employees who have spent a long time with us here in Lenore City Schools. And so we have a gift for them and I would like to ask, as I call your name, if you would come up and meet me over here at the American Flag, we have a gift to give you. So first of all, I'd like to start with the longest... I'd like to start with the longest-serving employee that is retiring this year and that's Ms. Darlene Powell. Darlene.
Now what are you gonna do?
Well, I put my mask on, but I'm not social distancing. Ms. Darlene, you told me that you had some plans, that you were going to go fishing and sit on your porch.
Yes, ma'am.
We wish you all the best. And we have a little token here to share with you.
Oh, yeah.
This is your engraved file with your name. And so we just want to recognize the 26 years that you have been with us and all of those been at elementary school. And all started out as high school. Okay. So we appreciate Ms. Darlene and wish her the best.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have a person who has been with us the next longest, has been a phenomenal person in our school district. We have just treasured the time that she has been here and that is from the high school, Ms. Chris Hare.
So Ms. Hare is one of those teachers that, I said this in our last faculty meeting, there'll be somebody that follows up on her and takes her place, but no one can replace Ms. Hare. She is truly one of the best teachers, not just math teachers. She is one of the best teachers I have ever had the privilege to work with. And Chris, when I say we're gonna miss you, we are going to miss you and more so the kids are gonna miss you. So best of luck with you. I know you've got grandkids that you're looking forward to being with. But we truly love you. We're gonna miss you. Congratulations.
And next, we'd like to recognize Mr. Mike Robinson. Mike has been with us for six years and has been a part of our custodial staff and we all know that these are our essential people. And so let's give Mike a round of applause for his six years. I asked Mike if he had any plans and he said, "No." That's what retirement's supposed to be. You're welcome. Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
We do have a couple more that are retiring who are unable to be here. So let me just recognize their names. We have Ms. Frida Carroll, who is a bus driver and is out of town today. And then we had another longtime employee who was unable to be with us today and that's Ms. Tammy Fetter. And she had 38 years of experience teaching in the elementary. So we just wish blessings and good will to them as well as they go into retirement.
Come on in, Mitch.
You know, we've had a lot of success in our school system in the past few years, especially last year. And it takes a team of teachers to have been such a big part of that success, right on down to the custodians who are our essential workers, everybody working as a team. And that's why we have the success we have today. So wish you guys the very best in your retirement.
All right, item number eight, approval of minutes from the following meetings. A, regular board meeting made the 14th, 2020. And B, the college meeting made 28th, 2020.
Thank you. Motion we approve. Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Aye.
Item number nine, here motion we pay our bills.
Salute.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Item number 11, announcement as a renewal of the superintendent's contract at the July 2020 Board of Education meeting. That's just an announcement. Congratulations, Dr. Burke.
Thank you. Thank you. My pleasure.
All right, item number 12, election of a board attorney. Superintendent recommendation.
Yes, Board, I would recommend that we continue to employ and retain Mr. Chris McCarty with Lewis, Thomas, and Keen, Craig, and Waldrop. He has served us well in the past couple of years. So I would like to maintain that relationship by having him represent the school district as our board attorney. So I recommend Chris McCarty.
Salute.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Aye.
Item number 13, approval to award tenure to the following teachers. Doctor Burke.
Okay, thank you. This year was truly an unusual year for lots of things, including the opportunity to recognize our teachers who have been recommended by their principals as deserving tenure. And so I'm gonna ask the principals now, if you would, to share with us the names of the teachers that are being recognized and a little bit about them. So we'll start first of all with you, Mr. Orr from the high school. If you will introduce and share with us your tenured teachers for this year.
First, we have Sarah Blackstone. She is not here today. She has been teaching our English Language Arts Department. That's an exception. She is so good at forming relationships with kids and just talking to kids in general. Very dedicated, pretty good follow on Twitter too with her dog, Mary Ford James. Sarah, I'm very happy to announce that Sarah has earned tenure. She has truly earned it. So Sarah Blackstone is our first one. Josie Miller is here. Josie is in our CTE department, teaches Ag courses, multiple Ag courses. And she has done a whole lot for that department. She has taken on a role as a department head there. She's a back, she's on principal advisory council. Says a lot about her and her young tenure as a teacher, but she does an excellent job as well. So Josie, congratulations to you. And finally, I had to put some real thought into this with Christina Mollinax.
That's really fair.
Of course, Ms. Mollinax teaches math, a lot of math that most of us can't do. I can say that. She teaches a lot of higher level courses in our math department and is our chess coach and has really elevated that program. We had a chess program before she had got there and now we have a chess team that's very competitive. They go to state. She's very passionate about, she's also very passionate about her teaching. It shows when you go watch her teach her classroom, her kids, you feel that when you're in her room, which is the case with all three of the teachers that we've got here today. So I'm very happy to recommend all three of these teachers for tenure at the time.
So ladies, if you all would stand, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we'll go to the middle school. Ms. Hoagland.
All right, we've got Dr. Chad Lewis now. He got his doctorate. Chad has done a little bit of everything. He's taught social studies, fourth grade, eighth grade, and now he has moved into sort of our behavioral role in our school with resorted practices. And he's gotten a lot of leadership experience too. We've delegated to him a lot. So he does a little bit of everything, especially the discipline. And he's done a lot of training in our school around resorted practices. So Chad is well-deserving and he is a huge asset to our school. We couldn't do it without him giving us Williams in the office as well. So and then we have Coach Will Hyde over here. And honestly, I can say about Coach Will Hyde is that he lives at the school. I mean, he honestly, I think, has a bedroom somewhere back in his office because he's there all the time, if you all know him. He does an excellent job for us at PE and coaching. If you've seen any of the videos that he's put out on Twitter during his quarantine for the kids, they've been hysterical whether they're romantic or not. But he's also been there at every food service distribution and has been our milk carrier. And if you know what that means, that is a hefty job, let me say. And he's still doing that now. So he's there all the time and he's a huge asset to our school and we wouldn't want anybody else to be in that position. So well-deserving, yes.
The gentlemen, if you would stand. Thank you. And Mr. Maloney?
It's my privilege to introduce you to Megan Millsaps. Megan is a kindergarten teacher. She's been a kindergarten teacher at the elementary every year that she's been with us. Megan is a huge asset to the kindergarten team. She has a unique ability to create a very caring environment, but yet holds her kids accountable for learning. And it is my privilege and pleasure to recommend her to you today for full tenure status.
Megan, would you stand? Thank you. And Board, as you know, quality teachers in the classroom is what makes a difference every day. We know the value of our administrators and how important it is that leadership is there. We also know that those teachers who touch our children every day are critical. They're our critical staff. And so thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here and for the work that you do. Appreciate you. So I would ask that these candidates be approved for tenure. Chair.
I hear motion.
I hear motion. We approve the following teachers. Tenure. Second.
Got a motion in the second. Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Aye.
Congratulations, teachers.
My flowers are just blooming away. Okay, item number 14, approval of the following LCBOE policy revisions. A, 5.500 discrimination, harassment of employees, sexual, racial, ethnic, religious. Item B, 5.501 complaints and grievances. Item C, 6.305 student concerns, complaints, and grievances. And this is the ones that we went over at our workshop.
Motion to approve the provisions.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? No notes? Any yet? Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Item 15, approval of Family Resource Center Annual Performance Report, 2019-20.
So Board, you have that report that was sent to you. Ms. Fox is here. So if you have any questions regarding that report. Again, when we talk about essential personnel, we talk about those people that are serving our families every day and that is our Family Resource Center. And they have worked tirelessly during this, I don't want to say closing. I know one of our new athletic directors caused a pausing of school and that's the way we think it is too. It's just a pausing. And so Family Resource Center has really been working hard during this time. So thank you, Susan, to you and your staff. But you do have her report.
Unbelievable job that you folks have been doing. It just... You read this report and you know what's going on and it's just phenomenal. And I make the motion that we approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Thank you, Susan. Item number 16, approval of textbook adoption certification for 2020-21.
And you have that as well. If you have any questions, Ms. Smith can answer any of those questions about textbooks.
I would say this year was a big year because it was English Language Arts, as well as two CTE courses that we adopted. But as you guys know and you've seen our presentations here before, we are heavily invested in the Expeditionary Learning and Engage New York English Language Arts curriculum. So the state allowed us to submit a waiver based on our results that we've had with implementing that curriculum. So our high school teachers were kind of vacillating between two high-quality materials and we actually got waivers for both of those for our high school teachers. So we can have a little flexibility with that. The state allowed us to just say, "We want to keep doing what we're doing. Our teachers are committed and our principals have done a great job leading that." So it kind of made our job a little easier this year because we just said, "We want to keep on keeping on." So that's why it's a little short and sweet.
That's not easy. You all make it look easy.
Well, they worked really hard. Our teachers have worked really hard. And while we've been out, you know, paused due to the extended closure, our teachers have been engaged in serious professional learning, working with our partners to keep getting better at what they're doing. And they've been really committed to that, sticking to it. I've been really proud of them for that. So a lot of learning has been going on with our teachers and our students while we've been out too. So it's been kind of neat.
Your motion? Motion to approve the textbook adoption.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Item 17, approval of the School Nutrition Compliance Plan for 2020-21.
And Ms. Vivins was here at our workshop and presented that plan and that's what you had in front of you to approve and spoke about that at that time. Today, I do believe she's preparing meals for Monday. So she's not with us right now.
Motion we approve Nutrition Compliance Plan, 2021.
Second. Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Item 18, approval of the LCS Band Boosters Annual Information Report for 2019-20.
Do you get anybody here from the band?
We do not have anyone here from the band.
They did a great job on their report. They always have.
That's pretty impressive. I said, "That's pretty impressive."
Yeah.
Be good.
Make your motion we approve. Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roquel.
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Item 19, superintendent comments.
Okay, Board and teachers and community members, we thank you for being here today. Couple of things. First of all, before I forget it, I would like to ask the Board's permission to cancel the June workshop. I will actually be on vacation. Okay, thank you. And then I do want to recognize some of our teachers that are here. In today's news, Harold, there's an excellent article about the chess grant that Ms. Mollinax received. Now, she is a high school teacher, but this is actually an elementary and a middle grant for chess. So if you haven't had a chance to read the article, it's an excellent article there. And the benefits for students. It also addresses some of the social, emotional needs of students in an online environment for chess. So it doesn't matter if you're physically in the school building or not, then you can participate. And we've seen the benefits of some of that during this time. We've all had to make some changes. I want to call out specifically Josie Miller for the work that she did at the plant sale this spring. You know, we were wondering, "How can we get people together?" And she adapted very creatively, did a drive-through plant sale and was able to serve the community as well as do what she needed to do for her program. So those are the kinds of things that we're thinking through right now. And as already has been mentioned, Coach Will Hyde and his Move On videos, many of us have enjoyed those during the time off. And he has brought you the LC masks there as a complimentary from the athletic department at the middle school. So thank you for those. And Mr. Dr. Lewis, as he has worked through helping with some of the social, emotional needs of students during this time and teachers, and guided teachers through how to put some processes in place in their classrooms to do that. So we honor you and we thank you for that because that's critical in the work that we do, that we have to have healthy students socially, emotionally, in order to learn academically. So we want to highlight that as well. And Ms. Millsaps, as we look toward what the fall will bring for kindergarten, and let's think about that a minute. That's a real challenge. And we're looking at some, doing business differently. We have to do business differently, as I just mentioned, even with the plant sale and the things that we're doing. So even with kindergarten, we're gonna have to do things differently. So sometimes it's difficult, but we can all do it together. And so great minds are at work trying to figure out what it looks like. And so thank you. Thank you for the work that you're doing as well. So everybody has their piece of the pie. And as so, one of the things that we're doing as a district is we have a plan for reopening schools. And what we like to say is, "Learning is not where we are, it's what we do." So we have a plan. We're putting the details on that plan. First of all, we have to make sure we keep people safe. That's our number one goal. We have to keep people safe. And number two, we have to keep students learning. So it's very simple. We are planning to put the best minds, the best practices in place, things that fit us in Lenore City. The administrators and supervisors and I are on multiple calls with national leaders, state leaders, to take the best of what's out there and modify it, adapt it for us in Lenore City. And so by June 30th, I've tasked the principals with having to me their safety plans for exactly the processes and procedures. And then after July 4th, I'd like to be able to communicate to everyone a timeline and exactly what we're thinking about for the fall. We are currently, we have an open survey to parents to give us their feedback as to what they would like to see in place so they would feel comfortable when they're... so they, they would feel comfortable when their children come back to school this fall, and that's, that's where we are. Our schedule has not changed, our calendar has not changed, and, uh, we plan to be in school. Now, we don't have, we can't foresee the future, we don't know what, what might happen, but at this time, that's, that's where we're going, that's what we're thinking. Uh, we plan to reopen on a normal schedule with health and safety modifications and precautions, and we'll be ready to adjust those as needed, whatever occurs. So, there's a lot of hard work going on this summer, uh, not only with the health and safety realm and the policy and procedures realm, but also the academic instructional realm. Uh, we have lots of buckets and a lot of people working very hard, so just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that that's where we are in the process, and, um, communication is key to that, so one of the things that, uh, Dr. Smallin and his team has done, uh, during the month of May, is begin the process of creating a new website. We've gone with a new vendor, and multiple hours and days have been put into place to creating a new website that is gonna be a better communication portal for all of us. And that will be going live July one, so we will have everything ready to communicate clearly, uh, not only to our teachers and staff, but also our community, uh, after July fourth. So, any questions or?
Before I close the meeting, I forgot the addendum.
You did, thank you.
So, uh, we'll do the addendum now, we had closed the meeting, so, approval of two thousand twenty twenty-one budget general purpose fund revision. Jenny, do you wanna say anything about that, or?
Basically, all we have, uh, all we have done here is adjusted our revenue, um, as you know, we're estimating that we'll lose a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in BEP funds due to the fact that the State General Assembly is, is, has been asked to, um, look at the budget again, and the governor's recommended that, um, that he, that they reduce the two percent instructional improvement component of the BEP, so, we estimate that'll cost us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of what they had said they were gonna give us, so, um, so that number has been adjusted, um, which also then will adjust our final reserve number, so that's what you're seeing there. And then, of course, as you know, um, the change, although it did not change expenditures, then we will take that, the one percent raise that had been added in and convert that to a bonus, so, um, those are the changes.
Did we already vote to put this on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I was thinking.
We did that during the agenda. Hold on, here, motion.
Make a motion we approve the revision.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any more discussion? Rocco?
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Aye.
Y'all got anything else? Congrats to the teachers getting their tenure. Way to go. Uh, here motion we adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion in the second, Rocco?
Rick Chadwick.
Aye.
Matthew Coleman.
Aye.
Glenn McNish.
Aye.
Mitch Ledbetter.
Lucky everyone to join us for lunch.